Alright. Good morning, it's the regular session agenda for August 2nd, 2023. We'll start with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. This is the regular session, August 2nd, 2023. Ms. Lazzie, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, I have three additions: patrol vehicle purchase, DAS amendment number one to agreement eight-one-six-five, and court liaison.
Okay. We'll also open up any public comment at this time. Let's see, we don't have anybody online. Okay. Let's go ahead and kick it off then with aviation ground lease. Do you want to present one more time, Mr. Shepard?
Again, it's our annual ground lease that we do. We lease the ground that their hangar sit on. Randy Al is putting his plane on in place of Chuck Kelly's hangar, hangar number nineteen. It's just the typical ground lease for the airport for ground, you know, for owned hangars, except their hangars.
It's good.
Pretty, it's the basic.
And we had some discussion yesterday about like fees potentially going up in January?
Yes, that's, that'll be another, yes, it'll be another, another time we sit down and I put it all together.
Really good discussion yesterday, really appreciated being told, so.
And then there was one thing about the, about when a landowner swaps, or you know, a hangar swaps out and they need to notify the assessors. To do that, for me to change that right now, I'd have to change everybody's agreement. You know, so it would be quite, quite the job to redo everybody's right now. What we'll do is when we change the prices, then I'll change. See what I'm saying?
Okay.
Let's, let's get going to, I recommend let's go into Randy's agreement, let's sign, let's get him in there, and then at the beginning of the year, I'll change the whole, everybody's agreement on the, on the whole, at the same time, and then we'll put that in there some way somehow.
With those two changes, basically?
With the two changes, with, well, the, there'll be the rent, depends on their square footage, and then also the assessors manual, like, when you, if you sell your, if you change owners of your hangar during the contract, you need to notify the assessors, have to let them know that the property has changed.
Okay.
Then let's, 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 because I don't have to change everybody's to do that, so. And then, and then on the annual, January one is when I can do all that.
Okay.
So basically, I just need your signatures and all that on Randy's, and then we'll prorate it, we'll prorate his rent from now till January one, or December thirty-first, and then start the full annual.
Do we need consensus, or do you need a motion?
Sure. Uh, looks like we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the Lake County Airport general aviation ground lease with Lake County and Randy and Denise Alves as presented.
Second. So we moved in second to approve the Lake County Airport general aviation ground lease with Randy and Denise Alves in Lake County as presented. Any final discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Pretty good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Looks like we don't talk about, uh, our position out there again.
Well, is there something you guys talked about, want to talk about? Reminds we'll talk about it, because that just helps me move forward.
I had a conversation with a person in the public yesterday after a meeting, and I do think we need to keep our options open. If somebody does happen to have the skillset of an aviation mechanic or something like that, I think that we should take a look at it instead of...
Sure. But I do want to note, when they, when they built this RFP, this was quite the process that they did, Bob R.D. put it together back in, when did I start? The year before, two years before, in 2011, they first started this RFP that we have in front of. Well, they designed it around our airport manager, now Tom Andrews. They've been talking, Tom Andrews helped write this up, because he did come over here, and he, these are the things, and this, he was qualified in, that he was willing to do for us.
Does that make sense?
So they wrote this up, because they weren't getting no hits at all on an airport manager here, you know, in the aviation world. It was tough, and it took them two years to get to where they got to this, to get Tom over here, you know? So I think that's what we're going to run into. I, I honestly believe we will not get anybody to move here to do that. I mean, it's, but I mean, I, I agree with you, Barry, I'm not saying that, it's just it's going to be a tough ride for, as a candidate, as us, you know, to get someone here to manage that airport.
I, I just, like Barry says, I think we need to leave our options open, but I think we also need to give Dave direction on, can he start putting an application together, put it out, or RFP for?
Because I, I want, I...
Because we got two moments, really.
What I want to do is get an airport manager out there that's qualified to do aviation. I don't want to worry about, yes, if we get, if we get lucky and that goes, well, I can work on airplanes too, and I want to do a business out there, well, then we negotiate that. I feel we don't need to negotiate the same way we did in the past, because it didn't work to the level that we, I mean, it worked, don't get me wrong, but not to the level that it could have worked if we had done it a little bit different. Because what we were doing is, we were paying all the utilities, we were paying, and he was getting, that business was no cost to him, other than, well, it wasn't, it wasn't a, he didn't have to pay for rent, didn't have to pay for electricity, he, we did all that, everything he needed to run his business, we paid for it. So I, I want to kind of restructure that, that's why I think, yeah, if he's a mechanic, okay, yeah, you can run a business, but you have to lease the building from us, you have to help pay the utilities, you have to, because we don't, no one pays our like deal for us, you know? So that, that's kind of what I would leave more for.
So I think you can do, taking all this into account, keep those two positions separate, but enable the same person to go for both contracts, it's perfectly fine, but keep them separate. So like, let's say, for example, pink scenario, let's say, I, I'm, I am an aviation mechanic, and I could do the groundskeeping as the airport manager. I come in, do the air, the contract for the airport manager, but I'm saying, you know, let me get my feet underneath myself, and then, you know, let's review this other contract, potential opportunity for me to do the airport mechanic as well. Let's say, then, I start really getting into the business aspect of my business, of the airport mechanic piece, and I'm not really wanting to keep doing the airport management piece, and I give you a thirty-day notice, and I say, hey, look, I can't keep doing the airport grounds, um, not the person or anything, but if you guys, I'll, I'll, I'll stay on, I'm going to keep doing the airport mechanic work, but you need to find someone else to do this other stuff. Okay, that's perfectly fine, that way we don't have to restructure an actual contract, because it's separate into two different pieces, it's just with the same person, potentially, if they want to go that route. And that way, we label ourselves, we keep our options open.
Sure.
But we keep the two pieces somewhat separate.
That's what you would, because you, all, all you're offering them is a place to do their business out of. You rent it to them, you don't give it to them, you rent it to them.
Right. And it's like, okay, you give me, you know, we, you give us the thirty days' notice or whatever, you don't want to keep doing this anymore, then make sure that you move your business operation to over here.
Because by doing that, I feel that that's what's going to happen. Once they get their business, they're going to say, I ain't doing this no more, because that's what we ran into with the current, or the one we have there, which I'm not beating them up, but that's normal nature. You're going to take care of yourself before you take care of someone else. And that's what he done, as, as his business grew, he stayed with his business, and he kind of went, well, I can get by over here, and that's kind of what happened, and that's what I'm trying to get away from, of doing it now, you know?
It doesn't preclude, but it's, but by doing two different contracts, one for airport management, one for the mechanic aspect of it, um, you, you still make, it doesn't preclude the individual airport manager from becoming the airport, you know, mechanic as well. They could easily do both and have two separate contracts that we look at separately as the county. I don't, what are you guys' thoughts about that? I'm just...
I already said, keep our options open.
Yeah. I just, I'm trying to find some direction for, you know, you guys to do both, if you have two contracts.
Well, I, I want to focus on getting an airport manager that works for the county, that's my number one focus. Whatever you do on the side, yeah, absolutely, that's, we can work with that, but also, if we just get a airport mechanic, I feel that we, and he's good, that we hire him, he doesn't have to have those skills, is that what you're kind of saying? You know? But then, once we get that good mechanic, or a good operator in there for the airport, then he, then he's going to know, well, I know this mechanic, I want to start a business. Okay, we'll lease him our hangar for a thousand dollars a month, and he pays two hundred and fifty dollars on top for a util, or more than that, for utilities, for internet, whatever it takes to run his business, that's on him. That's how I'm going to do it.
Because our utilities and internet and stuff ran about eleven hundred dollars a month, on top of...
And he got that for nothing, you know, that was...
The only thing he paid for was heat from the diesel furnace in the wintertime, and so...
So I guess we're, we're probably all saying the same thing.
Yeah, we, I think so.
We're all saying the same thing, we're just coming at different angles, so.
I, I just want to make it clear that we all are focused on, let's get the manager in there, then we'll play it by ear, let the manager's a mechanic, great.
And they will negotiate a business, other than, okay, you can have this, you can do this, you can do that. Got to make it worth his while, sure, but, you know, a thousand dollars a month, that's cheap rent for...
Enjoy your businesses.
Yeah. So anyway.
Alright.
So I like, just said, I think we're all saying the same thing, so I'm just going to move forward and...
Sounds good.
To our, but we need to get moving, because we got, you know, if we do want Tom to train or anything like that, which I think I know enough, I think I can kind of train him myself.
So you'll have, you'll have applicants ready for us by our next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
This is a tough, it's a tough sell, because where we're located, it's going to be hard to get a good, or even an airport manager to move out of Eugene to move to Lakeview for, you know? There are good mechanics already working, they already got the, unless you start a young one, or a airport, just anything.
Before we go to start charging rent, maybe that's incentive.
Right, exactly.
Things like that.
Yeah. Well, incubator, like we do down there, I start, okay, we charge three hundred dollars a month, after a year, you bring it up to six hundred dollars a month, after, and see where your business goes, just like we do at the incubator down here.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Dave? Alright, thanks, guys.
Yep, thank you, Dave.
Next topic is remote working policy.
Jay Duncan back in?
He wasn't.
Want me to go get Jay?
No, we got it.
Okay.
We just have a policy, and then Jay will come back and be here for executive session.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Alright.
And I had Jay print me out the most recent copy with the changes.
So, yeah, the, the, if you go to C, supplies, equipment, and software usage, under A, four A, the second, after a comma, the employee may qualify for reimbursing the monthly internet service fees, hopefully that is going to, will be strict.
Yeah, the only thing in under A in this one is the remote worker will provide their own office furniture and internet access, that's it?
Perfect.
And then you had something under general, was it, we had some discussion on the, was it number eleven?
Okay. That's just something that I'll be paying attention to, number eleven, where if an application comes before us, what is the agreement between the supervisor and the employee on how they will communicate, and what the expectation is there, being available to the public and to the supervisor?
Yeah, so it says on mine, under eleven, while remote working, the employee must be reachable via telephone, network access, or email during agreed-upon work hours. The employee and supervisor will agree on how to handle work-related telephone messages.
Okay. With that, I didn't find anything else that, what you guys did. So, I don't know if it makes a whole lot of difference, but when we use employee, should we put slash contractor in there? Because going back to the airport, or Paige Sully's, she's not really our employee, but she's a contractor.
I don't know if our policies would apply to a contractor, other than what was in a contract that we had with that contractor. So you would address that language?
You wouldn't want them to buy by the same policy, you wouldn't be, want to be...
It's in the contract.
Yeah.
It's in the contract. Yeah, I would imagine we just have nothing within an individual contract.
Yeah. People, I guess, yeah.
Makes sense. My opinion, I'm over here.
So this is a big step for the county, this is something new and different, don't know if it's been done before. A little bit to accommodate the times that we're in. Hopefully, it's not the norm, but it's the exception, and, you know, if it's not working, then, assuming that this was passed today, you know, if it's not working, I, I would think we would revisit it as commissioners, and, you know, if we're not serving the public well enough by people not being available for, I mean, noticed reasons why they, they can't be here then.
Yeah, I think this policy gives commissioners and department heads a lot to work with. If there are... If there, if issues arise, and we, we see work not getting done, this should be one of the first places we go.
Or public not being served.
Or public not being served.
Correct.
And we go to this, and we, we examine whether or not, you know, there's things not being met, in regards to the policy. And so, and I think we have plenty of protection within this, I've painted numerous scenarios with just about every department head and employee that we've had that might be interested in, in utilizing this, and I think that there's still going to be things that arise that we just can't anticipate, but I think we've got a lot to work with here, just to kind of keep things at a professional working level. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it as we go, and I, I, I don't think that there's anything that prevents us, if we find an inadequacy with the policy itself, we can come back as a board and review it, and add things to it, and say, well, that was the policy, here's the current policy, and this is what we're going to go with right now. We can revise it at any time.
Six, participation in Lake County's remote working program is entirely voluntary, supervisor may not require an employee to work remotely, also, no employee has the right to work remotely. The employee or the county may terminate this working, remote working agreement at any time with advance notice, not less than ten working days.
Right.
So it says the employee has a right to work remotely?
It does not, yeah. It does not have a right.
Does not have a right.
On the discretion of the supervisor.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear that right.
Or for, exactly.
Thank you for confirming that.
The antithesis of that, sir. Alright.
This is an action consideration, Adam.
I'll make a motion to accept the Lake County remote, remote work policy, working policy as presented.
I'll second that motion.
So we moved in seconded to approve the remote working policy as presented. Any final comment?
None.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 There's your motion, so.
Alright, hold on, I'm busy.
Pass is three, three zero. Okay, next subject is IGA with Clemence County jail beds. MOU.
Mr. Scher.
Commissioner, so this is the juvenile one. This contract allows, it's for, the contract is for twenty-four thousand two hundred, we budgeted for twenty-eight thousand, just to give us some fish, and should we go over our allotted bed days. We're allotted two hundred and twenty bed days a year, which equates to fifty-five a quarter, we pay about a hundred, we pay a hundred and ten dollars a bed day, so that equates to twenty-two. We're billed quarterly, six thousand fifty dollars, and some years, we haven't used our beds, which isn't a bad thing, other years, we've gone over our bed usage, and when we've done that, we've been charged a hundred and ten dollars a day for extra beds. Ideally, they would like us to have just one youth in detention at a time, unfortunately, a few years back, we had three at one time due to measure of other crimes, we couldn't have them in the community based on the charges, so we, we spent upwards of thirty-one, thirty-two thousand dollars that year, and I have no control over that. So the contract is fair, they take care of our kids over there, we have a great working relationship with Clemence, we've explored other options historically, the Shute's County has a detention, costs a little more, there's a, another detention facility we can utilize in the Dalles, which is Norcore, problem with that is, it's, it's, it's about, costs a little more, but then we have to transport to the Dalles, and then we have to go pick them up and bring them back, and that's, that's asking too much of my, my staff, too much gum on the road. So Clemence has always worked out, it's been a great working relationship, and a great partnership, in my ten years that day.
Sounds good. So I introduce, this is the jail beds for the MOU, but this is the IGA, the juvenile beds, just to be clear.
Okay, I thought we were doing juvenile first.
Yesterday was, today is second, but it, it's first now, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Scher?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the IGA with Clemence County for juvenile beds as presented.
I second with the fiscal impact of twenty-four thousand two hundred. Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve the IGA with Clemence County for juvenile beds with fiscal impact of twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Any final discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we're on to the jail beds for adults.
Okay, jail beds for adults. Currently, we rent seven hundred and thirty bed days, which equates to two bed days a day for a year. We pay just about eighty-three, eighty-four dollars a day for those beds over there. Historically, we Lake County has used those beds for our Sunville eleven forty-five inmates, and those, Sunville eleven forty-five calls for anybody sentenced to prison, twelve months or less, those are time in county jail. Well, we have seventeen bed facility, so if we have one, two, three folks sitting in our jail, let us for ninety days, six months for a year, it clogs our bed use, so although the contract says disagreements between myself and I designate, designate the jail commander, so right now, that's Sergeant Goldberg, so he coordinates getting folks, so we currently have one individual over there serving a jail sentence through the end of September. We've got upwards of three or four people over there at one time, all it does is eat away at our seven hundred and thirty bed days. They do a great job of keeping track of those bed days over there in our jail beds, too. So we've looked, we've looked at MODOC, MODOC is cheaper, however, we have to transport them there, and when they release, and they can be released at twelve oh one in the morning, we have to be there to pick them up and bring them back, because they don't want our, our, our population in their community, because nothing good ever happens. We looked at Carney County, and also Grant County, same thing, we would have to transport them there, we'd have to be there to pick them up and they're released. So this is, here, they may get released at midnight, but there, we have worked out where we can work with our clients to get to the mission, and maybe we can go pick them up the next morning. Generally speaking, they have their rides already arranged, and they may come back. This also includes men, women, and special, special cases such as sex offenders, or high-profile cases that will meet any of those criteria, whether they are law enforcement officers or who matters.
I'll make a motion...
That total is sixty-one thousand dollars a year for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a biannual. And that comes out of the two-two-nine account, our grant made dollars that come with us from the state, no general fund dollars are expected for this.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept the Lake County Community Justice and the Clemence County Jail contract, or MOU, for a fiscal impact of sixty-one thousand biannually.
Sixty-one thousand biannually, hundred and twenty-two thousand biannual.
I'll second that motion.
So we moved in seconded to approve the MOU with the Lake County Community Justice and Clemence County Jail with fiscal impact of sixty-one thousand dollars for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. Any final comment?
No, sir.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, thank you, Mr. Scher, welcome to the table.
Appreciate those.
We have time, I didn't hear it, it's thirty, but they're not here. So that's our sage grounds update, let's go to both, talked to him on the phone yesterday, he is going to be here, so.
Okay, in person or online?
In person, it's all they need downstairs.
Okay, that's great, you may just, you know, like, even get a few things out of them.
Alright, let's move on to the DAS agreement, number one, to agreement eight-one-six-five. This is the COVID fiscal relief team, they're catching up on amendments, and working on all agreements, with all agreements. Ms. Lazzie, do you have anything to add to this?
Uh, yeah, we restructured all the agreements, because they allow revenue loss, so that just makes it uniform with the other agreements, and accommodates for that. This is for the Breeze Iverson money, or six hundred thousand dollars.
See it as Cherry Albertson commissioners on it, so.
We have that updated on the one that you guys signed.
Oh.
That's why I didn't sign it, I didn't want to screw things up.
This is Richard, July one, twenty-two. What's that change to? There's no later than... There's no later than June twenty-third of twenty-three, bottom of the first page here.
Right.
Did you hear that? But we didn't get it till. So Melanie, uh, only updated, did these dates change down below as well on the first page?
I'll look into that, it should be until twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah. Maybe they got the years wrong there.
Yeah, because we had until twenty-four, and we actually have till twenty-six to spend it. It's going to be accounted for by twenty-four.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to DAS coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund agreement expenditure category EC six point one, revenue replacement as presented.
Second.
So we move and seconded to accept the amendment to DAS coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund, also known as CS FRF agreement, expenditure category E six, six point one, revenue replacement as presented. Any final discussion?
Just that that grant agreement number is eight one six five. For the record.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Kerrius. Okay. OHA agreement, one seven three, one three nine dash eight.
Is there any other thoughts, discussions on this, pretty straightforward?
So that is two different, uh, numbers in it. Which we, the sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for early assessment crisis and acute services, which you find on page four of eight. And seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents for mobile health crisis, crisis services, which you find on page seven.
Those may be two different, um, pieces there, but still under mobile crisis.
Yeah.
If you have additional thoughts on that, it might be good if I can, I can bring it up with the Health District CFO when I meet with him next week with Ann Quimright. And get some report outs on, you know, just in terms of how the cap, how the dollars are being spent, how they're not being spent, and where they are currently and so forth. A lot of our discussion is going to be probably centered around our sub-recipient monitoring policy and some of the things that we need to have some certainty that the dollars are being spent appropriately.
Can I make a motion?
I can. I can make a motion to approve the OHA agreement, one seven three, one three nine dash eight as presented.
So move and seconded to approve the Bergen Health Authority Agreement, one seven three, one three nine dash eight as presented. Any final discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Kerrius. Okay, patrol vehicle purchases. So I think you want to give us a summary again, please?
This is for a total of three vehicles. The county has approved by one vehicle for patrol and the town of Lakeview has approved by two vehicles for patrol. Uh, the total will be one hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents if approved. I have, these are, the top one is for a police package bid that is about five hundred dollars more than an SSV, but it has different governances and different, um, amenities that make it more suitable to pursuits. An SSV is fine for a pursuit, but it doesn't have the same speed rating as a police package.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the purchase of the patrol vehicles. One for Lake County and two for the town of Lakeview for a fiscal impact of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents to Kendall Ford of Ben.
Second that motion. I didn't get the total. That branch should be on the front board. Okay, okay, sorry. Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve, uh, patrol vehicle purchases, total of three. Two to be, uh, purchased by the town, one by the county. For total fiscal impact of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And accepting the bid from Kendall Ford of Ben. Okay. Okay. Any final discussion? Yes?
Um, they are going to produce a limited number of police package vehicles, so we may need to come back and revisit this for the SSV route.
Which is five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and I'll bring that to you if that happens.
Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Kerrius. Court liaison. This was on our agenda yesterday. Had a Freudian slip and missed it. I did. So, um, was approached by Amy Kinsley. This, the court system upstairs, which of course is the state, would like to reestablish a court liaison, or liaison, commissioner liaison to them. Although we're two different entities, we still operate under the same building and do many things together. This became, uh, enlightened when we had the, uh, broadband outage last week. Yeah, a little bit of a lack of communication between the two of who was doing what and et cetera. So, anyway, she would like to get that reestablished for the court and want to bring for all of us to point a liaison for courts. Apparently.
I nominate James, because he already takes care of the upstairs.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rebut to that. In the past.
Hope you're out of time.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, that there was a, uh, a phrase that was used in regards to this, that it is a two-way street, um, and that there needs to be conversation down here as well. We need to know what's going on in the past. I think it's been kind of an understanding that, uh, all three of the commissioners share, a liaison ship, if you will, to the court upstairs and.
Kind of like what we did with the Ritter Room.
Yeah, and I mean, they're, they are kind of here in the building, I mean, we've, we own the building and we provide them space to operate. Uh, we definitely want to have good communication, um, but, you know, communication does go both ways. Uh, I, there, it, there may have been some personalities that worked better with some commissioners in the past that, and that's where a lot of that information was shared and, uh, currently, you know, that just hasn't, hasn't quite been the same. But that's the way it is, and I think that all three commissioners should, were, were accessible, were here. And, uh, I think that it should be kind of a shared liaison, uh, for all three. That's kind of where I'm kind of coming from. I mean, I, I do liaison with the DA's office, uh, but again, even with that, I think it's something that all three commissioners can go up and deal with the, the DA and talk with their, with his staff, which are our employees at any point in time. I, I think, you know, with the outage specifically, it was, uh, it, it would have been fantastic to have the court, you know, someone representing the court in the room for our morning meetings at eight o'clock every morning. Um, I think they were here the last two meetings that we had during that outage. And, uh, you know, we, we're transparent, our door, the doors open and they can get that information at any point in time. And I think also, because a lot of the needs that the court has upstairs has been largely pertaining to maintenance and facilities, uh, they tended to go directly to Dave Berman, which is fine, um, and go direct, and they put in work orders the same as anyone else, sometimes they're supposed to. So that's kind of, um, I see it. I, I, I think it should be a shared liaison.
Okay. I think, I'll, I'll go with two of you. So, um, we'll just say that it's a shared, shared position. And we'll add it to the bottom of our liaison list and show that all three of us are liaisons for the courses.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Consensus?
There used to be a work group of folks that met with the courts. I was on that, Dave Berman was on that, Marla was on that, the DA's office. And, um, there was another person part of that. And then we had, um, at the time it was Amy Davidson, we had, the judge was part of that.
Judge. What was the, it, it, it was building security, I think.
We talked about different issues, um, if, if we were having issues, they're having issues and the commission was part of that as well. So there used to be a work group.
There was a work group, yeah, and.
Well, not as much a worker, but a committee.
Yeah, they, they talked about like the law library, different things like that. They would kind of have some discussions about the security and the rate of the.
Security.
Yeah, but I don't think that they've, maybe had anything on that for some years. Melanie, do you remember when the last time they, that committee met?
We haven't met for a long time.
Long time.
Long time.
If we want, we could try and revitalize that committee and then we could have an appointed commissioner for that, for those meetings.
Let's tease into this.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Once I have a meeting, they have a meeting, but, uh.
Yeah.
Maybe we could talk with Judge Manover, too.
Yeah, see if it's.
You guys, you guys here for the meeting?
Yeah, I'm in the right spot or not?
Yep, come on in. Yep, you're in the right meeting.
Oh, okay, hi, hi, I'm Michael.
Hi. So, yeah, no, that sounds fine.
Any other discussion on that? Meeting minutes?
Make this quick and painless, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from seven eighteen, work session, seven nineteen, regular session, and seven twenty-four, emergency session.
Second. So we move and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from seven eighteen work session, seven nineteen regular session, and seven twenty-four emergency session, twenty twenty-three as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, Mr. Kerrius. All right, little thing left on our agenda is, uh, safe grouse habitat discussion.
Oh, we're right on time.
Uh, perfect. Skyler and.
Um, I'm Michael Klein, I'm the Upland Bird Coordinator.
Michael?
Excellent.
Okay, come on up and have a seat, the front seats here.
Okay. How, how do you want us to do it? I mean, we have a presentation that we could, okay, give you or?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just give that to Melanie.
Sure.
Maybe we'll take just a couple minute break and let you guys set up.
Sounds good.
We'll be right back.
Recording stopped.
Do you want it on flash drive?
That would be preferable. Do you need one?
It's in here somewhere, too many pockets.
Yeah, okay. I have one, you can go grab two if you want. This is kind of epic, too.
Excellent, thank you.
Chee-chee.
Where are you at?
Um, technically I have an office in Salem. I live in Benz, so sometimes I, I just live from there.
Remote working policy.
Well, it turns out there's Upland Birds on the east side of the state and also works out all right.
There definitely are. Couple.
A couple, there's, yeah. And is it this top one?
I'm gonna go back to this.
And I put the clicker.
Where's it at for you?
Oh, I put it in the bins.
Bin.
Yeah, yeah, I was just telling, um, Commissioner Williams that, uh, I, I technically work out of the Salem office out of headquarters, um, because it's statewide position.
Yeah.
But, uh, I've, I've been really only there a couple days, you know.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, um, it's, it actually works out, works out pretty well. My, I always joke that my safe grouse and turkeys aren't my problem children. And turkeys, a turkey's more a problem on the west side, safe grouse, east side, so.
A neighbor, um, raised some guineas.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, they came into our yard here a few times.
I hear they're just bug eating.
Yeah.
Crazy for, crazy.
Kill snakes.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do they, what do they, what are, what are they? Yeah, I was gonna ask what they sound like.
Noisy as hell.
Worse than chickens. Yeah, no, I've heard they're pretty remarkable. Cool feathers, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of neat to look at.
Are you guys starting to see some baby quail around here? Yeah, it's starting to pop up.
Definitely up in Severly Lake area. There are a lot of quail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, it's always funny, it's like, it's easy to, they just disappear and you don't see for a long time.
Right. Got a neighbor who has a couple game cams out on his place, he has nice wide open areas. And this morning he posted a video from his game cam. There was this little quail that had jumped up on this like little ledge right in front of the camera. So you just see the little, little thing, it's kind of like, like, just looking, you just see it, just kind of like popping up there right in front of the camera and.
They're funny.
Yeah, they're just curious birds.
Michael, how do you say it? Um, it's M.I.K.A.L., last name C.L.I. Yeah, I always joke about when I see, when, when you see a quail run across the road, it looks like their head is going to beat their legs by several seconds. Something like that. Thought I'd see some chucker or something on the drive, but, but we came down from Burns this morning.
Oh.
Yeah, we, we did our, I don't know if you call this the dog and pony show, but we, we got quite a few of these meetings scheduled and so we, we had our, had our.
Quarantine.
Quarantine meeting yesterday, yesterday, yeah.
Did you get much, uh, public turnout?
Um, actually, we did. Um, the the SWCD was really good about reaching out to the landowners and and letting know, you know. They had an INRAC meeting last night. And so they kind of did that in conjunction. And we had a good turnout of of landowners that had a lot of good questions and
Great.
you know, really, you know, wanted to know how how it was gonna affect what they can, can't do on their land and that that sort of thing. So we we talked a lot about about code and and mitigation and that kind of thing.
Do you guys have much communication with the SDWCs here in Lake County? Any communication with them?
Um, yeah, most, you know, most of that connection is through the LITs, through the LIT, the local implementation team.
Okay.
So, um, so, yeah, yeah, we've got we've got good relationship there. And the watershed council.
I imagine they'll be, and some of them are coming to the meeting today, they're.
I'm sure they will, yeah, yeah.
Recording in progress.
Guys wanted me to go, so I just kind of, I have the same presentation that I'm giving to the LIT and also this evening.
Okay, okay. Just a summary. You don't have to give us the full.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Yeah, we'll skip through some slides. Okay.
All right, we'll come back into session. And today we have Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife here to give us a update on Lake County sage grouse habitat update.
Yeah.
And if you don't mind, introduce yourselves for the record.
I'm Skylar Holden, sage grouse coordinator for O E F W based in Hines.
I'm Michael Klein, I'm the Upland Game Bird Coordinator for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Right, floor is yours.
Awesome. So we started this project early twenty twenty-two. So when we sent out our first scoping letter notifying all of our partners in the public that this process was beginning. And we've been working on it since then. And I guess I'll go through the background quick, like just a brief sage grouse.
Is it number?
Where do I find this?
Maybe I need to click it. Sorry, it should be good.
Okay. So as most of you probably know, sage grouse are pretty they have high site fidelity, which means that they go back to the same locations year after year to breed. And this is the reason that we can study them so well and that we can track their populations through time. We go back to the same spots, count the birds. There are X number of males one year, X number of males the next, so we can get a pretty good index of the population if we count a good majority of the lecks that we know of across the state. And the second main point here is that the females nest within four miles of the leck that they were bred at. So those two are kind of the two main points when we're looking at actually the modeling process. And the reason that we're so concerned with sage grouse is because they have very slow population recovery following habitat disturbance. So anything like wildfire or large scale development, even subsubdevelopment in their sage grouse habitat, this would be top of the they're a relatively long lived bird and they have low productivity. So that all goes into that slow recovery as a population. Go ahead and click again. Oh, actually, I think I.
You have to, Howard.
Cool, okay. And the other reason that we're concerned about sage grouse is because that they act as an umbrella species for all the other critters that occupy the sage grouse ecosystem. So they're the easiest to study because they go back to these places and they're the easiest to count because we know of all these places that they occupy. But as far as all of the other critters that also occupy these ecosystems, they're a pretty good indicator of the health of how those other populations are doing. So if sage grouse are doing poorly, generally, other sage grouse obligates are doing poorly. If sage grouse are doing well in an area, generally, the other sage grouse populations are doing well. These populations across the West and especially across the Great Basin have seen pretty strong or pretty high population declines. The most US, the most recent USGS open file report has shown that there's been a decline of forty-two percent in the past twenty years, which is pretty significant, and about seventy-eight percent since nineteen sixty-seven, and this is specific to the Great Basin. In twenty ten, sage grouse were deemed warranted but precluded for listing under the ESA. And the conservation commitments by Western states, especially Oregon, has helped with the the twenty fifteen not warranted for listing decision. And this is huge. This is the reason that we're here. We want these birds to be managed by the state and not by the US Fish and Wildlife Service. And that's one of the impetuses for for updating this plan. So the plan that O E F W uses to manage sage grouse in the state is called our Sage Grouse Conservation Assessment and Strategy. It was first developed in two thousand five and then updated in twenty eleven and adopted by the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission at that time. It formed the basis for the Large State Action Plan, the Sage Grouse Executive Order, and the associated administrative rules in twenty fifteen. And this document also describes the process for defining and delineating the core low density sage grouse habitats, which is the process that we use in this current update, using that same modeling process that the document defines. And in addition, this document also defines our habitat and population objectives. So that's that's kind of some context. Sage grouse habitat, as the as the Conservation Assessment Strategy defines it, are those areas that are necessary to conserve ninety percent of Oregon sage grouse population. These are the core areas. And then it also defines low density habitat as those additional areas which provide breeding, summer and migratory habitats for sage grouse. And that's that extra ten percent of the population. So this is what the core and the low density areas currently look like, the twenty eleven model. So you can see in the red, those are all of our current core areas, and in the blue is the current low density areas. They're pretty broken up compared to some of the Western states. More contiguous areas of core is more typical, let's say in Wyoming and Idaho and Nevada. But our current core areas are kind of these blobs on the landscape. And this is what it looks like for Lake County currently in the twenty eleven layers. So these layers are important because, one, they do have implications for land use in core and low density sage grouse habitat. But on the other end of the spectrum, there's also implications for conservation actions in sage grouse habitat. So thinking about local implementation team, project prioritization, NRCS, HGI enrollment, grant funding opportunities, CCAAs, everything, all of these depend on these sage grouse layers as well. And our document defines when it should be updated, really just as new information is collected, which we have a lot of new information since twenty eleven. And it also defines when these maps should be updated. And that's when specifically we have new information on winter habitat use, leck distribution, disturbance thresholds, and the success of any mitigation measures. So the reason that we're doing the update now is because we found over a hundred and fifty new lecks since twenty ten. Our research projects have contributed over a million new sage grouse GPS locations from marked birds. We have new habitat suitability models, and we're trying to align this process with the VLM's current planning process. Currently, O E F W's core areas and the VLM's priority habitat management areas, the PHMA's, are in alignment. And we're hoping that going forward, they can also be in alignment during these planning processes. So like I mentioned, we started our our process in March of twenty twenty-two. And really what took quite a bit of time was updating this twenty eleven model with all the new data. Like I mentioned, we have a bunch of new lecks, a bunch of new GPS data and new habitat suitability model. And I won't go into this too deep, but the model inputs are really based on three main factors. That the leck layer, which any leck with over one male during twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-two was included. So it actually excluded a fair number of lecks that didn't have any males detected during that time that were originally included in the twenty eleven layer. The second is the connectivity, so those migratory corridors between lecks. And the third is the winter habitat. So it makes up the breeding season, those migratory areas, and the wintering areas. And after the modeling was completed and we brought it to our district biologists, all of the districts had a very close review of this model, and it actually, they changed these areas quite a bit. Because with the model, you have a lot of inputs that are that are buffered, so there's much area that is not actually sage grouse habitat that we need to account for. And in some locations, there's areas that the model didn't capture that we also need to account for. The criteria that we set up for these adjustments for for biologists were, number one, the unincorporated communities, towns, and cities were all removed from either core low density habitat. And aside from that, no donor polling was allowed in the process. And then the second was considerations for four main things. Developed agriculture and pivots, areas of heavy pine and juniper cover, areas lacking sage grouse cover, and then areas of rugged topography. And these considerations are all because we know that sage grouse typically don't use these or these aren't typically sage grouse habitat. And the rule set was, number one, we can't grab out areas, even if so if there's a pivot that's in the center of the core area, we can't cut that out because, one, no donor polling. But if that pivot is located on the edge of core habitat and it's deemed as not sage grouse habitat, then it can go to low density. If it's on the edge of low density habitat and deemed as not sage grouse use, then it can go to non-habitat. And that's, all of those considerations follow the same general rule set. But then there are exceptions when we have areas of no unsage grouse use, like with marked GPS birds. So looking at a closer example, like this has been pretty birdy, but if we look at a photo of what this actually looks like. On the left, you can see this is the area around the Dell. The area in red is modeled by the model. It's it's the core area modeled, and then the area in blue is the low density modeled. And then after our district biologists had a chance to review this area, you can see that there is a lot of that developed agriculture that was actually cut out. And quite a bit of of core also cut out from this area because it was deemed as non-core sage grouse habitat. Another example is over by Valley Falls, where the model brought in a lot of area that was in heavy tree cover, some developed agriculture, and some very steep terrain, as well as some subdivisions. All of that area was cut out as not sage grouse habitat. And then another area is a good example by Plush. So there's areas in low line, low elevation that aren't sage grouse habitat. Some areas of pivots that were not deemed as sage grouse use, so these areas were cut out as core as well. In some cases, there are areas that were actually brought in, but the model didn't capture. This didn't really happen so much in Lake County, but there's a good example in the high steams. So on the left, you can see this is the area that was modeled. The red is the core, the blue being low density again. It missed those high elevation, really important, critical summer habitats that we know the birds use, both from observation and from GPS marked birds. So the district biologists included that high elevation summer habitat as as core. So after carefully reviewing and pairing local knowledge with fine scale satellite imagery and GPS data and some other data sources, the district biologists had removed approximately half a million acres of unjustified core habitat from the model and about a hundred thousand acres of unjustified low density from these maps. After our internal process was complete, we moved to our cooperating agency review, and they had a similar process. But since our Phase Two, our internal review covered much of this area, there weren't really many adjustments. But it was still important for us to reach out to the to the VLM, the Fish and Wildlife Service, and our other, our large land management agencies. So now we are in our public and partner review process. So we're asking for comments from the public, comments from all of our partners. How do these maps look? Did we capture sage grouse habitat in the state as we know it? And we're asking our partners to use similar adjustment criteria. So using biological justifications and following these criteria, are there areas that we can either add or remove from these draft maps? We have a formal comment period open currently, but it's it's going to be open through the December commission meeting. But really, to give us time to review the suggested edits and justifications, we're setting September twenty-second as the deadline that we want our partners to provide feedback so that we can potentially incorporate these edits and justifications into our product that we present to the commission on December fifteenth. So that's the entire habitat mapping portion. But in addition to the mapping portion, we're also updating the plan, as I mentioned earlier. And we haven't had that much time to work on the plan because we've been pretty busy with the maps. So we're still, we're working on the plan. We're updating of new science information and data that's relevant to sage grouse conservation and management in Oregon. And similarly, we're going to be asking our partners to provide feedback. Once we have these draft chapters available, we're going to publish them as they're available and and hopefully get good good comments back on the plan as well. We're hoping to be able to review these comments in October and November and then present the plan in addition to the habitat maps to the commission mid-December for their review. So the next steps, like I mentioned, is seeking our partner input on these maps and also the plan. But we want to make sure that we accurately capture sage grouse habitat, both core and low density as we know it in the state. There's various ways that we can have our partners review the maps. We have them available on the Landscape Planning Tool, which is a pretty useful tool to be able to toggle on various different layers, zoom in and out to specific locations. We also have PDF maps available on our website. And if folks aren't computer savvy, they can always come to O E F W office and we can look at the maps. They can submit their comments in person. And they can always email any questions or comments to this email here, sage grouse dot plan at o e f w dot oregon dot gov. So that's that's really all I had for the the presentation part of the meeting. And if we want to go into more, maybe great details for the modeling or some other things, I have some additional slides present as well.
Mr. Carey, any questions or suggestions so far?
Question, I guess. As you're seeing these maps change and a hundred and fifty new lecks that we've come up with, how is that correlated with juniper removal? Is there a recognizable difference? Because the data that I've been hearing, there's at least a six percent change in sage grouse numbers when you remove the juniper so far. And so.
Yeah, as far as our discovery of new lecks, I don't think we can correlate that directly to juniper. Yeah, the research, especially out of Lake County, has shown that juniper removal increases sage grouse population. And that's like population growth. Yeah, population growth rate.
So have you guys documented and put that made it public? Or are you still keeping that under your lid or?
As far as the growth rate goes or the, you know, it's interesting that we are starting to see, especially coming out of the Warner unit, that that the production, the chick production is is much higher in the in the Warner unit than we're seeing in a lot of these other areas where they didn't have the large scale juniper removals. It really is having an impact on brood production.
Consistently higher.
Consistently higher. So I'm always really pleased to see that.
Because they've done a lot of juniper removal in the, especially in the South Warrens. You're only recommending, well, both of them, but especially in the South Warrens.
Yeah, and as far as the lecks, sometimes new lecks do pop up, but generally, these locations on the landscape are fairly set. So if it's a historic well-known leck, there will always be birds on it if there's good habitat in the area, whether that's five birds or whether that's a hundred and fifty birds. And in some areas of less quality habitat, those are the ones that can blink on and off. So if if some juniper encroaches into marginal habitat, maybe that marginal population will blink off for a few years. If the juniper is removed, they'll still go back to that typically go back to that same area to leck. So that's one way that we can we can monitor those populations as well. But we haven't done any in-depth analysis, looking at leck occupancy or reoccupancy from juniper removal specifically. It's a good, it's a good thought for sure.
Just anecdote really to add to that, certainly in Warner, you've seen lecks that were known historically to exist and then have winked off for decades that have now reemerged because of that juniper removal. So that's, as you indicated, not necessarily part of the the new lecks, you know, new leck locations, but certainly that growth rate and and response is there. To the point about whether any of this information is public, much of the research that's been done in this country was through OSU, through Christian Higgins' lab. And as grad projects have completed and come through, that's all been published. It's all in the, it's all in the public sphere.
We could definitely do a better job with outreach, I think, but it's it's all out there and and getting the word out is is key. But it's all out there and getting the word out is key.
So if you go back to your map?
Yeah.
I don't know if you can kind of touch on that before now.
The comparison of the...
Of the whole region, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I think you have, I have some numbers here.
There, that one.
Yep.
So as you can see, kind of east of the Diablo Mountains out there in the middle of the sand dunes.
Yep.
In the previous map, you have absolutely nothing out there. And there were, there haven't been, there are no junipers out there.
Mm-hmm.
So there was no juniper treatment that would have contributed to the locating that additional lec that you see over on the right-hand map that suddenly shows up in the middle of those mountains there.
Yeah.
Is that just, is that just because someone finally went out there and found a lec? Or is it?
Exactly. Yeah, it was, it was an area, there was actually a couple lecs out there that we didn't know about, that after some aerial surveys, we identified. And they've been persisting on the landscape over the past eight years.
Because that area, I've been out that, in that area a lot over the years and it's like another planet. It's, it's just goes on for...
What are you talking about again?
So, just as you can see, this whole area, this whole area here is completely vacant. And then over here, all of a sudden, you get core habitat right in the middle of it and general habitat going all the way up over...
That's a donut hole.
An oddity, a donut hole. That's an oddity, a donut hole.
So I guess I was kind of maybe even using that as an example of a new lec.
Yeah.
That I'm seeing on the maps that had nothing to do with juniper.
Exactly.
Obviously, because there haven't been junipers out there.
Yeah, and I'd say that's probably the best example or one of the best examples that we have in the state.
This is real close to the antifier.
Right.
And they obviously aren't in there.
Right, yeah, we've, we've had some discussions on that, you know. And the lec that was there, the one or two lecs that were justifying that core habitat area was completely within the fire's garden.
Yeah.
And burned over.
Right.
And is unfortunately now covered largely with weeds.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, those, those lecs that were, if we were to go out and look at them, it's, it's not hard to figure out why we didn't know they were there before. You've kind of got to want to be where they are to get there at all.
I think I know that country well. In fact, I think right in the very center of that core habitat, I've camped.
Really?
Like smacked out on the center of it. And I've been out there before.
Over biking.
Yeah, that's some God forsaken.
Sage grouse.
I never saw any sage grouse when I was out there.
There aren't very many.
But there's some.
So anyway, it's interesting. I mean, I've got some comments maybe on, you know, as we go north from there though, into the new mapping, because you can also see that you've got a lot more, a considerably larger amount of core habitat area.
Yeah.
Toward the north part of Lake County.
Yep.
I mean, and going into the shoots. But I, I'll reserve that for maybe some conversation.
Sure.
I think a lot of those were, you know, part of some new research projects where we didn't, we didn't know that those were movement corridors in some, in some cases. And then there's also this kind of rebalancing of what lecs contribute to that 90%. As this, as the average size of our lecs gets smaller, as we lose these 200-plus bird lecs, the medium-sized lecs take on more power in this model. And so they wind up spreading that 90% over a larger landscape. And so that's part of why we're seeing the map expand because we're trying to capture that 90% that spread over more lecs.
That's a really good point, Michael. And that's, that's really what happened in that north by entire country. We knew about those lecs there and they were previously low-density, but they've still been persisting and in some cases actually increasing, which is why those are now seen as core habitat as opposed to low-density.
Well, now that we're on it, I'm just going to give you an example of donut hole-in that actually did occur.
Sure.
Right up here, this is the new map right here. You went all the way around the lava beds and the Devil's Garden up here and then reached all the way down in with your general habitat. It's not core, core's all the way up here. But for some reason, whereas you can see, there was no habitat at all. And there still isn't any real justification for this coming down into the middle and in between pivot areas and climbing down into the farm country and actually around residences. I'm curious why all of a sudden this giant bush into the actual farm country and obvious donut hole-in in several locations here, which was not occurring in this location. If it's a corridor, then what is it a corridor to?
Yeah, no, those are definitely good questions. And the reason that that specific location was drawn in was because we have bird use, marked, marked bird use that actually used that corridor between the Devil's Garden area. And on the right, you can see that there was a little bit of the Devil's Garden that was actually mapped in, which seems funny when you look at it. But then when you look at the GPS locations, there's pockets within the Devil's Garden that those birds are using in the summer to raise their roots, which is mind-blowing to me.
At the same time, I mean, coyotes definitely don't want to go in there.
Exactly, yeah.
I could maybe see some justification for that, but...
Safe, huh?
Yeah, like getting a drink of water or something.
Yeah, I don't know. I honestly, I'd love to go and check that area out. But as far as donut hole-in in our process, any, any adjustments to the boundaries aren't considered donut holes. When we talk about donut holes, it's like if you take out an area within either core or low-density and there's surrounding core and low-density around that.
Yeah, and I can appreciate the work that went into the Plush and the Hill area as well as the Valley Falls. It makes a lot more sense now.
Yeah.
In compare, in comparison to what it was. But, yeah.
Yes.
Just some of my initial thoughts.
Yes, definitely. I appreciate that.
And just so you know, James, that particular area that you're pointing to, we spent a lot of time talking about that. Which was not easy to get through.
That particular area has come up a number of times already in regards to other, other subjects.
Yeah.
And so it is just, I couldn't help but notice, you know, and it's...
Yeah.
It was an interesting...
It is.
Yeah.
And as guys show that's in our fact, GPS marked birds.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting how, how the birds have shown, shown that they're willing to use those irrigated agriculture areas, you know, it's been so dry. They're looking for that, that, that summer wet, their green groceries in the summertime. We do see them, especially in these dry years, go down and use those agricultural areas.
And that's a constant point of contention, right? We're trying to avoid, we're trying to be reasonable and thoughtful about the goals and objectives of this map, which is sage grouse conservation. That is not, the goal of this is not to directly interfere with private land rights with agricultural activity. So we don't want to be mapping pivots in.
Yeah.
But we, I mean, the birds do use them.
Right. And it's, it's not even just pivots. You know, I think it's sometimes, you know, other people's, you know, just, you know, that it's not following property lines, obviously.
Right.
And some people feel like they, you know, they own a piece of property there. They'd like to put maybe a good conditional use for non-farm dwelling or something on their property. Oh, but by the way, there's a, you're in this mapped area here and we don't want you to build a house. And so there's a lot of impacts there. And that's where the swords tend to get crossed. And, and just being transparent.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We recognize that for sure.
I guess the, maybe the flip side of, of, you know, the new map, obviously we're adding, adding some acreage. We're proposing to add acreage to Lake County. So what that does to the 3% cap is actually counterintuitive, right? That, that you actually wind up with more acreage available underneath that 3% rule.
I mean, there's acreage taken off, but, and there's acreage put on. And maybe justifiably because we want to see it being put where it's appropriate. And we want to see if there's going to be impacts based upon development or from development in the future. We definitely want to have accurate maps. But when you start changing them, suddenly it's like over here and it's not over here anymore. You know, there's going to be just that, just that crux.
Yes.
I'm done.
We, we want, our job is to bring you the most biologically accurate math, you know, that we possibly can. And, and, you know, when it, when it comes to making decisions about how this affects things on a regulatory basis, that's like, we, we want to, we want to bring the, you know, the most straightforward biological, this is, this is where 90% of our sage grouse live and these are the areas that are important. And, and, you know, but understanding that there are regulatory impacts to moving the lines and especially to our private landowners.
In the, one of the beginning slides, you said something about removing half a million acres.
Yep.
Was that a core habitat?
That was a core. That was following, following the modeling process. So the model has all of these inputs mainly being the lec layer and then that connectivity habitat and the winter habitat. Those are the three main model inputs. And that's the model that was used in 2011 with our current core and low-density. We input the new data.
Do you have a map of that, of the, zoomed out more of Oregon or?
Of the, the initial model.
Or, or is it mostly just sent in?
We do have, well, then there's the, you have the, the chart that shows the changes in acreage.
Oh, yeah, we can look at that.
That might be, it might be.
So, yeah, there's that change. But then following, following the model is when we brought it to the OFW bios. And then that's when most of that habitat from the model was removed. Those areas that didn't make sense biologically. And that was, that was really our biological standing there was, hey, we have all of these, these areas that this model included that we don't think should be sage grouse habitat. And these are our justifications, our biological justifications for removing this modeled habitat from the final, or the final draft map.
So Lake County actually went up.
Yeah.
But other counties went down.
Yeah, Huron County went down.
Yeah, they have some post-fire habitat that we, that was determined not going to recover. Probably in our lifetimes. So those lecs are gone and they're probably not coming back for a long time. So some of that did, did fall out.
The numbers, the numbers on a whole are a little bit deceiving to you guys in that, you know, what, what we see is an addition of acres has a lot to do with that Diablo country that we were looking at. That's a huge block that got included. What got excluded was all the stuff that we've spent the last 11 years struggling with. Carlin Lane, South Adele, that's the manors around Plush. All the places where there have been no good biological justification for the 2011 map. So we had that Diablo country, we not found those couple lecs. If that stuff hadn't been included, Lake County would have gone down.
We contribute to the conversation as a partner or whatever with the BLM on their proved resource management plan for sage grouse, which they're coming up with a new conservation restoration on BLM lands for 10 western states. They got what? The 2015 plan, the 2019 plan, and then there's two other plans, I believe.
Yeah, they have several alternatives.
Yeah, I think there's at least four alternatives, maybe five.
I think there are five, yeah.
It's hard to, you know, you're right. So they have a 2015, a 2019, and then they have the, C is similar to 2015, D is similar to 2019, and then E is...
Throws a big loop.
Throws a big loop.
Yeah.
I think it's been hard to participate on that because of, just don't know where that's all going.
Yeah.
And that was definitely, you know, a huge part of our, the task for getting, getting with our own mapping program because we, we really want to make sure that, that their priority habitat areas are the same as our proposed core areas. Because that's, that's going to just create a whole bunch of inclusion and those don't line up. And so, I mean, that's a big part of why we're here. They, they have a, they fast-tracked their timeline and so we're, I think we maybe have, maybe we're, we're ahead of their process by this point.
Yeah, we thought we were going to be behind, but I think we'll have alignment. We really do want to match these areas of, in their drafts that they're putting together, they used a similar model that we did. We, we have this model publicly available. So they used a similar model, but then, you know, their Phase II of the process, their district bios, looking at these revisions is going to look different than what our district bios did because I don't think they gave them quite as much time. Like they didn't go to each district locally like we did. They, they used more of a state-level approach when they were doing those edits. And they also had a very quick turnaround, whereas we spent more time on this process. We spent enough words of six-plus months looking at this, this modeled habitat and really making, with a fine comb, going through and, okay, what is sage grouse habitat core? What is not sage grouse habitat core? And I don't think that they had the opportunity to do that. So what they provide in their final EIS is hopefully going to be the product that we come up with in this process. Otherwise, they might use a potentially subpar product.
Yeah. So...
Nobody wants that.
Yeah, okay. Well, it'll be interesting to see what the next production from comes out to be, so...
Yeah, and they're trying to align with all the western states. And so, so even if Oregon is, is doing a good job on their process, there's, there's other states that are, that are, that are maybe, that don't have the, as good of a working relationship maybe with the state and BLM.
Some of the examples, though, do say accept Oregon or, you know, or this is only for such and such states.
I feel like we have a really good working relationship with, with the folks that are doing this on the, at the state level.
For Oregon.
For Oregon, yeah.
Yeah, so they're definitely pushing Oregon's agenda, but it just, I think it's up to those, those higher-level decision-makers as to what gets included in that, in that draft and the final EIS.
So I know this isn't a map question, but going back to the juniper removal and then we all know, like in the Warner Valley and Plush and the Hill areas, they're having really bad raven problems, especially during calving season. And we know that, by your guys' data, that a lot of the depredation is from ravens. What is the state going to do about that? I mean, I hate going back in history, but like when you, when you, when the US Fish and Wildlife took the cattle off Heart Mountain, from that day forward, you see a decline in every species other than the predators and including sage grouse. And, but yet, you keep hearing these environmental groups stating that cows are bad for sage grouse, blah, blah, blah. In reality, it's the ravens, just like the loggers were bad for the spotted owl. They found out it was the barn owl that was killing them. And so I just, I love the data. I just wish that we could use accurate data to, you know, help us with the raven problems and, you know, the encouragement of juniper, blah, blah, blah. And so...
Well, yeah, we can, we can certainly speak to, you know, what, what we are doing and what we're, you know, what we're, what we're trying to understand about ravens. And, you know, we have this isolated pocket of sage grouse up in Baker County that's, that's really kind of on the edge. And, and we're, you know, trying to buy, buy that group of birds some time to recover. We know that they're really not producing enough chicks to replace the adults. And so, so in a situation like that, and we know that the, that the raven density is, is beyond a level, you know, where we, we know that they could have an impact on sage grouse. So, so we do have, we, we spent the last, what, two or three years removing raven nests in the vicinity of our nesting sage grouse. And this year, we started doing some adult removals up there. And, and we're, you know, going to look and see if it, if it's making any difference. But ravens are very smart, they're very adaptable, and they're very tenacious. And so...
And they're also protected, which makes it...
That's right. So it's, it's not, it's not an easy task to, to take on, especially on, at a large scale. We see that more as a Band-Aid and, you know, until the habitat can get to a point where, where a FEMA or a nesting sage grouse can have a chance of, of having good cover and successfully pulling off a brood before a raven can find her. So, so it's, it's a Band-Aid approach, but, you know, we, we will have some, I think, some interesting information from that. We're also testing the DNA of, of some of the ravens' scat to see if they really are eating sage grouse or not. So that'll be kind of interesting to see if, if it's, you know, if, if our, you know, perceived concerns are are real or not.
That's a good way of telling.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, yeah, that's great, but I mean, what good would a juniper removal be if it's not the ravens? I mean, because their ravens are using it for roosting, right?
They do, yeah.
To to flesh that a little bit, you guys, on the nationwide, so we pass, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, but I think 40 or 50 years, we've seen a nationwide, like a 400% increase in raven population, I believe is the number. And that's that's largely believed to be because of essentially human subsidy. We've provided food and nesting structures. They like to nest on pivots and telephone poles and all kinds of things that we build, plus we tend to feed them. So when we, so when we talk about addressing raven depredation, you're talking about trying to address a problem that is really difficult or potentially impossible to address through killing ravens? It's the landscape that's all that's changed that's facilitated their growth and we can't really change that necessarily. We can reduce some juniper nesting opportunities, but we've got subsidies for the nesting all over the place. So it becomes a challenging question to address through killing the birds. It's a bigger issue.
Does the juniper have larger impacts than just hosting ravens, I guess, is is also part of that conversation? The sage grouse see the, you know, any any structure on the landscape as a threat, whether there is a hawk or a raven or something there anyway. And and it's, and if you think about, you know, think about the understory, like what lives under a, you know, a stand of juniper, nothing to eat. And, you know, the junipers are are tapping up the groundwater and, you know, it has a negative impact on on forage and cover. Sage grouse just don't go anywhere near anything that tall, so they just, they'll depart the area. And so so it's not just that it could host a raven, it's it's what those trees do, you know, to the food and the cover on the landscape that that the sage grouse desires. So that's, and and, you know, Lake County's done a great job of of knocking that back. We've seen some great, some great response, you know, whether that had anything to do with ravens or whether that just had to do with those birds being more comfortable on the landscape and willing to recolonize those areas.
Or combination of...
Or combination, oh, absolutely, yeah.
Definitely. But this conversation is really interesting because we're talking about ravens, which are a species that aren't managed by the state. And when we're going through this process, this sage grouse habitat update process, the birds are managed by the state. And what we want to avoid is the birds being not managed by the state. Like, if these birds get listed under the ESA, it's out of our hands. Like, we will be having the same conversation that we are about the ravens. Like, if there is something that we wanted to do about ravens, we have to go through the Fish and Wildlife Service. If the bird being sage grouse are listed, the state is it's out of our hands. So what the product that we've come up with here protecting this specific habitat is the best way that we think we'll be able to avoid keeping the bird up the ESA.
This is us demonstrating, you know, our best effort to, you know, to to manage these birds responsibly at the state level.
And what we said we would do too, right? When this, when the bird was petitioned for listing and the result was warranted but precluded, the states and the cooperators, the everybody involved agreed that we would implement conservation strategies that would preclude further declines to a point of of listing. And so the service, the interests that would like to see listing are watching very closely that we implement this stuff, because if we don't, it will be out of our hands.
Yeah.
I will say, in my time there reviewing what the BLM's doing with their plan, never once did I hear him say livestock grazing is a problem.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's not a, that's not a proven thing.
Right.
Fair horses.
Fair horses. And then they, you know, they do mention a a small thing about improper use of land in specific areas. And I do have concerns about AC/EC stuff. You know, because that's, that seems very political and going after certain particular areas that there may not be justified.
Perspicacity is much...
Yes.
Yeah.
So, anyway, it's interesting. You ever got judges removing grazing in certain places? It's like, what are you, what are we doing?
Yeah.
We want to keep open lands open.
Yeah. Allow for multiple use. All right?
I did have one other question, just just curiosity. Do you guys have any kind of field trips or anything on when the research groups go out there and go out on land that, you know, maybe an interested party, commissioner, or maybe even a couple members of the public could attend also, just to kind of see and witness? Do you do anything like that anytime?
SageCon.
Oh, that's a good point, right, right. And and Lake View thing, that's right. That would be a great opportunity. I think, though, it is kind of late in the, is it November?
Remember, it's still some...
September 27th, oh, it's coming up.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
You're not doing anything in September.
September 27th will be a field day for SageCon in Lakeview, just east of here.
Okay.
Awesome. I think that's a Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay.
Wednesday, Thursday, so middle of the week.
So but there should, there should be a full group of people, animal.
There's, there's a lot of folks, yeah.
Yeah.
BLM's helping organize that along with Rachel Davy. Okay, others.
Should be a lot of experts on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, doesn't that...
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate the update. I know you got a lit meeting downstairs today as well as a public meeting, right?
Yeah, thank you for...
What time is the public meeting?
The public meeting's at 6:00.
6:00 tonight?
We're hoping to wrap it by 8:00, but we'll see where the conversation takes us.
Well, we'll have some paper maps to roll out for people to to look at and stuff.
Good, good, all right.
Yeah.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
I can see you.
See ya.
In closing, you guys, I owe you an apology for being late. I've been out of town late for a week. I did not get the night train, but I had 11 o'clock in my calendar, I'm sorry.
Hey, you're all good. You're all...
We had to admit that we got here a little bit early, so it worked out alright.
Next on our agenda is executive session. All right.
Thank you, guys.
We'll have a quick break and then...
Do that.
Nice meeting you, Michael.
Nice to meet you, too.